...plan. Michael Batcher is here to talk about the maps and some of the final touches and things that we need to do to wrap it up, including a discussion of the energy section, discussion of the draft. Sid should be here also. He's been, he and his staff have been doing the editorial work on it. And I think everybody, maybe yesterday at some time, got a first copy of that. So, I haven't had a chance to go over it. Then last will be a public comment, if any. So, having gone over that, I would look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or additions to tonight's agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, let's take a look at the Tuesday, May 16 minutes, which Julie was kind enough to send out an email. So, I hope everybody's had a chance to read them or come in tonight. If not, read fast. As soon as everybody's ready, I'll look for a motion to approve those minutes.
So, we...
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion, changes, comments about the Tuesday, May 16 regular meeting minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an abstention pending. Motion carries. Doug, you see how quickly we got to you here?
Why, you're moving right through.
Usually that part of the program takes a half an hour or 45 minutes, but we're gonna get you.
I haven't figured out what I'm gonna say.
Well, come on up here. Hey, we're an easy group to talk to. So, come on up and just wing it.
See, here comes those two.
Hey there.
I'm here with my wife, Amy, by the way. She's really the brains behind.
Literally behind you right now.
Yeah.
As you speak, yeah.
You have enough.
You don't have to leave.
He's a wise guy.
We have an overflow. All right. I just introduced our guests tonight. It's Doug, it's Mickey. And I'm not even sure why Doug is here, what he's gonna talk to us about. So, I'm curious. How can we help?
Well, my wife and I recently purchased the property adjoining what used to be the Anadale Kill, which is a property that we owned for 30 years and ran pretty vigorously when the tract was in operation. We managed to hold on to it for many years, but then Clara, who lived behind us, decided she was gonna sell the property. And for those of you who...
Next to the lead.
Right next to the lead. And it consists of seven cabins.
Oh, the cabins and, yeah, okay.
And what used to be Cherry Court, an old ice cream parlor, and a trailer, a trailer home. And, well, anyway, the property is in severe disrepair. But we felt it was prudent for us to purchase the property since the property that we've owned for many years, the Victorian house, 1888, we wanted to protect our investment there. In any case, we began thinking about what we're gonna do. And we started to put some ideas together and bounce around our friends and neighbors and whatnot. And I started to inquire to the state about the potential of receiving some assistance with regard to historic preservation and things like that. Because actually, all the structures on that combined property are nearly 100 years old. The cabins are, I mean, years ago in the 1920s.
Wow.
As well as Cherry Court. And then, of course, the Victorian from 1883. So, one of our goals was if we're gonna do something there, would be to do something that would be preserving that history. And so, we came up with a plan. But one of the roadblocks we came with pursuing some of either grants or assistance from the state was the town. I guess the town, again, this is new. We were tucked up in the woods for many years. We came out and realized that the town hadn't, or what I thought was the town's plan was not actually registered with the state.
That's correct.
Or it used to be, and then it wasn't, whatever. So, since it was, since it was not registered with the state, we weren't able to get any assistance from the state historian, preservation folks, or anybody at that level. And we're trying to really put together the feasibility of moving forward with the plan. So, without knowing whether that assistance is available, we're really not sure where to go. So, that's one of the reasons that we're here. We're here to sort of let you know that we're interested in redeveloping that property, doing something that's decent. And to see what the status is, if there's anything that we can do to help move things along, or if what we do doesn't move forward.
Right. Well, we have good news on that front. We're at the, we're putting the finishing touches on the new town plan. There is a process that'll probably take another 30 to 60 days of, or more, of public hearings, select board approval, and then regional approval, state approval. And once that's done, I think the important piece for you is that we can move forward on our applications for village designation, which would allow you, I believe, some of the funding you're looking for to develop that.
Right. That was the secondary part of the plan.
Right. And you can't get that unless there's a valid town plan in place. So, I mean, as far as that goes, you know, we're close. We're not, it's not imminent. It's not gonna happen in the next couple of weeks because of the process that we have to go through. But the vast majority of the plan is written, or little finishing touches we have to put on it. And then it has to go through that public approval process of the select board approval, regional, and state. And that's all about to happen.
Does Doug's current draft have the corner of Route 7, 346 still within the village designation as the original one did?
Yeah, I do believe. Yeah. The only thing we changed was...
That's a really good question. Did Richard Amor look at your boundaries and have any issues with that?
I think he did.
Yeah, he did. But I don't think he changed any of that area from village to anything else. Jim, did he?
Pretty much status quo.
Yeah.
That corridor is protected and 347, 346 corridor.
Absolutely. That's right. And village is appropriate there because you want a combination of housing and...
Talking about two different things. There's zoning.
Oh, correct, as far as the village designation.
So, what you're asking is, are you within the village designation?
Correct. Yeah, he did. He went over that. I don't recall all the details of that, but we'll find that out for you. Absolutely. Because I'm pretty sure it starts right there and it works its way down to then the industrial, where the village ends, our actual zoning ends and the commercial starts. I think that he agreed with us that that would...
No.
I saw our secretary go...
Say chicken or...
And Ms. Barsati putting her hand up.
Oh, it's different. When he, when we went through the tour, because Matt Molden, we included Matt Molden, remember? And he told us to cut that out, go from the library up through to make it smaller. But the corner of 346 and where his house is, is part of...
Right. Would be part of that village designation.
But it's much shorter.
In fact, I think we promoted that as the main village and town. It was that area in the plan.
But yes, his house and the cabins are in that little area. But it wasn't the full that we originally...
Yeah, because we were gonna include that for some reason. But I remember it did stop there. It wound up not being included. Not that that matters to you, Doug. But your property clearly is.
So, one of the other, one of the other things that I guess we just sort of wanna throw out, you know, for here is, even though we have some ideas in what we could probably do, what would be affordable to us, and all the various pieces that fall into place. I mean, having been four inkeepers there on the site, and we kind of know that, we plan on making those cabins and actually combining two to make one. So, they're a little bit more of an upgrade than what we're here now and moving. But we're not hard and fast on that. If, we're more interested in making, I guess, we wanna do something that not only could make us some money, to be honest with you, now that we've purchased the property, but we don't wanna do something that is inconsistent with what the town would like or what it needs, what the community might like. And I guess what I'm saying, fairly flexible, you know, realizing that the corner is a pretty visible spot near the town. And so, before anything moves forward, if there are things that people have had in mind that might be developed, and maybe a spot like that, then I guess I'm saying we're open.
Open to those suggestions, yeah. Wonderful.
Do you have, I'd like to hear a few of your ideas, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. I don't, you know, whether it's gonna come true or not, I think it would make a real good discussion to, I know that you've got ideas, and whether they're gonna work out for you or not, I have no idea. But nor do you probably, at this time.
Well, Amy says I have too many of them. They're part of the problem.
Well, okay. But you can, you know, I guess what it is, is, you know...
What are you looking for, for a customer?
Yeah.
Are you a tourist? Are you looking at veterans? Are you looking for people divorced and on the way out?
Well, it's interesting that you say that, because actually, we actually considered all that. One of the things that we, I mean, I looked at the cabins more from like a structural standpoint.
Yep.
And that there's these big cabins that are about 250 square feet, and there's little cabins that are about 120 square feet. They don't really do much by today's standards alone.
Right.
My idea was to pick them up and to combine two cabins to make one around a brand-new bathroom with a foundation. So, that the smaller cabin would become a bedroom, and the larger cabin would become a combined living room and dining room. It'd be called, maybe like a micro house, something like that, or a micro apartment. They're all first-floor. And if we do it in such a way, we would move them so that the main 1888 house would have two more micro houses next to it. And the old Cherry Court would have two micro houses next to it. So, we would have a cluster of three homes, and three homes around the small courtyard. By doing that, it kind of creates a little space, either for renters, visitors, tourists, or it also could provide a little community space. We also thought about veteran homes, veteran housing, handicap housing, because it's first floor. We also thought about the potential of independent living, you know, the step-four assisted living, that that might not be a bad thing for those things. We know the tourist business a little bit from our past. So, we figure if we built it in that way, we could probably make a go of it. The other thing that that does by clustering, picking up those cabins which are spread all out, clustering them, is opens up the middle. And I've been talking to my neighbor, and we've been talking about the idea of maybe a farmer's market. It's a large space. It's an acre and a half of open space where it could be a greenhouse right there on site. Mill Cherry Court actually has a small retail area associated with where the ice cream bar used to be. It's about 700 or 800 square feet. But it would make a nice retail center, drive by, pick up your veggies and go home kind of place.
Awesome.
So, we're talking about that. And we're open to...
I think you're on the right track.
There's a sewer out there.
He's a lot of sewer.
There's plenty of sewer. Yeah. Right now, there's sewer and town water. There's also two wells on the site that were previously used.
He's for each one.
We were in the years.
He's sewer for each one.
When they were running Shamrock Court.
With the moving of the buildings that you're thinking about doing in whatever direction, you will not stand to lose your historic preservation grants and all that that you want to apply for?
Well, this is where I hit the deadlock. Because once I contacted, once I contacted the state, they said, "We really can't help you until you get the town plan, until the town plan is in place." And so, I just didn't wanna spin my wheels trying to find out. My guess is, I did look over the paperwork. My guess is probably not, because I would strive to keep the facades as they are, keep the architectural elements that are salvageable, like the windows, as they are.
You're trying to keep the character of these buildings in place, or so-so in place.
And also their original intention. I mean, you know, it's a similar intention to how they were originally created, right?
Exactly.
I just had a thought. Have you contacted the Preservation Trust of Vermont? Do you know about them?
Not the trust.
They give, this is something you could do now without needing the designation. There's a woman named Meg Campbell, and she's the kind of Bennington, southern Vermont person. And she could come and kind of give you an assessment. And they have small grants so that you can get a really detailed bid from a contractor, you know, like they'll give you funds for that.
Well, the good thing is I am a contractor.
Oh, there you go.
So, I can probably get myself a really good bid.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, it's good to get.
Due diligence, as you gotta get.
Right. Well, or even just, you know, they've got tons of, she'll give you a whole list of all the different grants available, et cetera.
That's great. Those are the kind of things that we were hoping to be able to pursue.
Right.
Yeah. I think that a single cottage is a thing of the past. You know, I don't think that it's, I don't think it's a workable issue anymore. Am I saying that correctly? I don't know. I don't want to...
That's right.
But I think you've got an idea here.
Yeah, definitely.
And especially if you're keeping the character of it. And I mean, it's, well, I mean, it sounds great to me. That's my deal. When you take, when you take, when you take a chicken coop, turn it into a cabin, or, I mean, you know, it just, it makes an interesting plan. So, I like that.
And, you know, getting back to the preservation part, there has been some adaptations to the original plan over the years. They put on these little extensions in the back. Those would come up. But I was even, with the way I was gonna do them, if each cabin has one of those in the back, I'm actually gonna, when I pick them up, I would take those extensions and point them forward. That would be the way you'd get through it. So, if you, almost no exterior facade that would be disrupted, that hasn't already been, really just try to, and then sandwich that new bathroom right in the middle.
Yeah. And this would be a year-round proposition, I take it?
Well, that was, yeah, that would be the other thing is, we would intend to try to replicate the best of the old by preserving the history, but then the best of the new. And I would really wanna try to go with the energy efficiency.
That was...
They have to be completely gutted on the inside.
That's right.
There's nothing salvageable on the inside, except maybe the windows and some of the hardware.
Yeah.
But all the rest of it has to go. So, we would, you know, we would try to go in with the best and the latest and greatest.
Actually, when you're all done, you've only got the frame, structure, or the character of that building standing.
Right.
Basically, yeah. That's the whole idea, to make it work.
25 years.
Well, there is like until...
Early 70s, maybe.
70s. Don Wilcox was across the street.
Don lived in their house, didn't he?
No, no, no. The Wilcoxes. His sister did. Jeanette. Jeanette lived in that house. But I mean, Don had the motel with the fire department. And I don't really think these people, but I'll say one thing to you. You get a unit ready. Somebody is in store all the time.
That's gotta be the best house in town.
Really and truly.
Gorgeous. Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It really is beautiful.
It's the most expensive house to eat in town.
Well, you know, your contractor.
I just wanted to share this with you, too. I think you're ready to bring this to a wider discussion. I don't know if you wanna make a public out, but there's a discussion on small business development on Saturday.
And you're invited.
On Saturday. I mean...
I did, and, yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, I did reach out and was made aware of this. As part of that discussion, too, back to the energy efficiency part of it with insulation and whatnot, I'm not sure how. But I did talk to Green Mountain Power. I mean, I would also like to think about the heat lines, make this an electric. I don't know how we'd incorporate solar into it. I have my own aesthetic issues with some of it. I do have a 10-kilowatt solar array myself where I live. But it's, it's on a, what would look like a limit to. But if possible, we would like to incorporate that into the site. I have been talking about maybe the greenhouse, if we do go the greenhouse route, that parts of the greenhouse that open up to vent, so, along the ridge. We would like to take advantage of that if it's there, if it was tasteful and done right.
Yeah.
Hey, it's definitely an interesting property. It's an excellent question.
How much land, how much land, total?
I haven't done the math, but I think there's maybe two and a half.
Yeah. Funny room. Funny room. So, you're talking our language with the housing and farmer's market, preservation. There's nothing in our own zoning that says that you shouldn't be able to do those things. There's nothing in the village designation that I think could crush you out. I think you could, nothing would help once we get that squared away. So, good for you.
Well, yeah.
Music warriors.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah. We'll move as quickly as we can on our end to clear the way for you here. And then help you with that, you know?
So, the process, like you mentioned 30, 60, 90 days, I did, I did receive some...
Did I say that on television?
Those were firm, I believe.
Speaking of my lapel.
Because I was made aware that there was a July 1 deadline for the upcoming year, which we knew was not gonna happen. In fact, Mike, is there a mic here?
Two.
Two of them.
Mike Slattery and Michael Batcher from the BRC.
Okay. So, I, you actually checked into something.
I did.
Years ago, a couple of months ago, feeding back to Richard Amor. No, you said that you're working on it, basically.
Richard's been here to talk to us within the last year. And Julie, once again, drove him around Ponell to look at the different areas that we would like village designation for. And we're just waiting to submit applications once the town plan is okay. So, we would like to move on that as quickly as possible. I mean, literally, we're right at that point where the editorial work is being done by Sid. There are little finishing touches and some acknowledgements that we need to do and have some discussion later tonight. That's why Michael's here. Maps are drawn. It's pretty much ready to go to the public. We have to send it to surrounding municipalities first, the state, as I said, the regional, and then warn the public to come in and give them time to look at it, to put it somewhere.
As much time as we're gonna get to look at this Republican South plan.
About the same amount of time. We're just gonna get this thing off the board on it immediately. Fast and serious.
Don't start.
That's how, that's how it works. So, you know that even if we had it ready tonight, and Julie sent it to the surrounding municipalities Monday, that's 30 days away from a, from a public hearing anyway, right there. So, you know, this is the 20th. If we can by July 1st get to that stage possibly, and if I'm talking out of turn here, Michael, if you go...
What are you guys kidding me?
You're right.
I'm just the helper here.
Yeah, I know you are.
The town plan has to be completed before we can apply for the village designation?
Yes. My understanding. And that's what Doug was told. That's what Doug was told.
And then, so, 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 once the town plan goes up, then there's the secondary...
Well, our, we warn the public, and they come in and they scrutinize it and ask us to make changes necessary. And once we do that or not do that, we send it to the select board. And the select board goes basically through that same process within or not. They have, I believe, 30 days then to warn the public. The public has a second round at it, and so does, so does the select board. And then if they ask for changes, it comes back to us. We can then make the changes and then, and then have a, have a vote among ourselves to put it in.
Is the next village designation not available until next July 1st, or is there a second?
I don't, maybe.
No?
No, I think they meet, okay, so there's a board or something, some body of people that get together and review the village designation applications periodically. I think it's a quarterly, but I don't, don't, don't write that stuff.
I think we're talking about two different things.
It's not just like once a year.
Yeah, I was talking about the application for tax credits.
Right, yeah, that. Different than just the designation part of it. One thing I can tell you is that, that once this is wrapped up, that that's next on our agenda. So, Richard Amor is gonna be back down here, chances are, to be walking us through this again. So, you know, that'd be a good time for you to get involved in that part of it. We'll let you know that.
Another meeting next month? Next month, meetings ever?
I don't, no, probably not. We're probably still gonna be wrestling with the town plan at that point. Before that, though, I'll, I'll give you a call, or Julie will give you a call, and we'll let you know. But that's, we have to have that complete approval before we even get Richard involved again and submit. We know, we have the paperwork, the applications. We have all of that. Julie's got all her photographs and maps and everything done. Just a question of getting the town plan in place and then moving forward.
Yeah. So, from my end, and once that is, once that happens, I can open up the conversation with the state historian and whatnot. And I'm a little hesitant to do anything, although I'm poised to possibly do it. But I don't wanna...
Hard to hold back now.
I don't wanna do that and do something that is not recoverable. And I did come across some language there that if, like, we do certain things, that you're not gonna go back and consider that.
So, you spoke with Richard directly?
No, I spoke with a woman by the name of Caitlin Corbin several times. And then she reached out to Richard, you're talking about Richard Amor?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, she reached out to him, and then he, I guess, contacted you. Does that make sense? How about email thread?
He contacted us as I wanted to, as soon as I knew things were going.
Yeah. And so, there was...
Well, okay. I guess maybe their hands are tied, but couldn't they give you some off the record? Look, Ponell's gonna have village designation or designations. And when they do, you'll be able to do this. I, maybe, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I, I would like to think that somebody in the state could give you some preliminary guidance on this. Especially since it's not just an idea and a wish list.
Bill's been down.
You're really knocking on their door with, you know, with all the energy of wanting to do something.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's very different. Or it could be very different. I shouldn't say it is.
So, appreciate you letting us sit on this.
Sure.
We look.
Yeah, very special.
Exciting.
And I hope so.
And if we do think of anything else, you know, like a five-story hotel or something.
Yeah. And if you know anybody that can pay for it.
Right. We know a lot of colorers.
No, we will. But, no, and I am sincere about that.
Sure.
We, you know, more so, wanna make sure that something not bad is done there.
Yeah, I agree.
Does that make sense?
I agree.
Not bad is good.
I think this in power Ponell is very timely for you as well.
We gotta know bad.
Bad kinda comes easy.
Do you want a list of things we don't wanna see there?
No, that would help. That would be fair with town. Well, thanks again, everybody.
Yeah, absolutely, Doug. Thanks. You know what I mean?
Thank you.
You bet. All right.
We're going to leave you.
Okay. Good luck. It's pretty exciting after this, if you want to stay.
Gets better.
Gets better.
Thanks again.
We'll see you guys.
After that, ask if Doug's on Main Street is another venture.
No, no, but when I went in there for a beer and he found out we had the same name, he was sure.
You've got to be aware of it.
Julie, is there a remote for the AC or?
It's over in the far corner on the top of the filing cabinet. It's a remote control.
Okay.
If you want to turn it up, right?
You want to set it aside?
It's still coming back.
We can open it up, too, you know?
Oh, okay.
It was hot in here when I started. And I didn't know how many people were coming. Did you find it? I think it's a little cream color.
Yeah, I don't mind in there. No, I'm fine.
Did you find it?
Nice to hear some good ideas like that.
35. That's a good man, you know.
No, I'm allergic to flowers.
This guy's got a green. Whether it's good or bad, I mean, he's got a green. You know? I go for that.
Let's get back on track. Item number four is a review of the mail.
Okay, sorry, I'll wait a second.
Sorry.
I have BRCRC workshop for local officials, essentials of land use planning and regulations, Wednesday, June 28, in East Arlington. I'm going to pass it around to, because.
Okay, I'm going to that.
I can't talk about.
She was excellent.
Then I have the VLCT.
How do you kill that?
It's hit the stop button.
Huh? You hit the stop button up there.
There are buttons.
And then it's going to get hot in a second. So I'm trying to.
I'll open this window.
The window next to Henry's open. Seems to be.
No, it's the cold air.
Oh, it's the cold air.
This is the old-fashioned way of doing it this summer time, I know.
You're a shock. You're an old-fashioned.
I'm a fashion kind of guy, what can I say?
We're saying we're talking about energy conservation.
It's just like.
Oh, that's nice. We've got a good seat.
We will deny.
Now we can hear. Now we can hear. They're totally right.
I know it is.
You're saying pretty good trees outside.
It's going to be funny for a lot of people.
Clarksburg Zoning Board of Appeals notice.
Could I interrupt you for a second? For those of us that may not have been paying attention while Julie was talking. This is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, their legislative wrap-up.
Got one from Bill Botso today, too.
Got a nice wrap-up.
Yeah.
Yeah, very well done. They, it was quite a year up there.
Town of Clarksburg.
Clarksburg zoning. Yes, it's a notice. They're doing, holding a public hearing in a site visit on June 27 at the Ketchum Memorial Meeting Room, Tahoe, at 6:00 P.M.
Four. Board of Appeals notice.
We got those. There's a Massachusetts statute.
You do, you have to.
Have to send notice to their abutting town. Now, I don't know why we get one from Clarksburg.
Because we have Clarksburg.
Do we?
Yes, we do.
A little chunk there.
When we say notices out, I have to send it to Clarksburg, Stanford.
So this is a particular.
We're abutters.
Interested in petition of Dennis Bernardi of 218 Bradley Street, North Adams, Mass. Requested a variance from Section 5, subject to revised zoning bylaws. On Clarksburg for, he's not meeting the setbacks and he wants a variance on that. So, anybody interested in going on that?
Going to Clarksburg? Get on your horse.
If you want to get there and support Mr. Bernardi or their town, there's your chance. Okay.
Then I have the wastewater system and potable water supply permit for Vermont Outing Club, 230 Thompson Pond Road.
Particular site in Vermont? Or I guess that all blends together, isn't it? Of a proposed replacement water system, wastewater system, which will include an innovative alternative IA system component, biocustic pipe leaching systems manufactured by. So that's to serve those single family homes up on the hill.
Within the.
Yeah, within the Vermont.
Dr. Fisheau.
All of those, yeah. Margaret, or Margaret Comar's daughter is up there now. No, Margaret's up there now. It's big bucks? Yeah. Yeah, I know. I know some people that own some land.
Know what they want to do.
Oh, that. So they want everybody to chip in and pay for that. Okay. All right.
And I have VLCT, 50 years of news. That's the June edition.
Kind of letting things slide right by you here, I know.
It's old age.
I email it to you.
It's one of the privileges. Here's another hard one for you, Ron.
Then this one. These are three emails that have been forwarded from the Selectmen to the Planning Commission. One letter is from Michelle Beckrell. One is from Rebecca Dragon. And a letter from Melissa Cal- nope. Sorry, not Melissa. Donna Lozan. This all has to do with the climate control model. I must, to do with Shannon's type thing. There's Shannon.
Shannon's deal. You really own that town.
So these.
Bill Botso volunteered. Shannon's done a lot of work on this.
So these are letters that they're very.
Under the gun.
That, this one from Michelle. I mean, I can read them all. But pretty much, basically, they could sound from like the process of how grants are done. How they make sure that public notice and. So I would make a suggestion that we make time to discuss that for future.
Put it out on the next agenda and get us copies of all those emails.
Because they're not happy with the process and that the public's not aware. But they have every right.
Wait, I have some questions.
And because they went to the Selectmen and they didn't do anything about it, so they passed. So those letters were passed on to us. They're not very happy.
Is part of it to do with the citing and all of that? Or is this just notification of meeting?
Well, I think they're three separate.
Three separate issues?
Completely separate letters. I haven't read all three. I've read Rebecca Dragon's letter. And her issue, because she forwarded it to me, was that she had gone to the BRCRC Regional Energy Plan Meeting and had some concerns about that that she brought up to the Select Board.
And Michael, I think you read that email as well, didn't you?
Right. And that had more to do with.
Conflicts between the regional and the municipalities in deference to a 248 hearing.
Like, in her opinion, a potential conflict that could happen if, for example, BRCRC, the Regional Energy Plan, wanted to do something and Ponle didn't.
According to their mapping.
Right. Or according to a development, for example. And so that's not, doesn't have anything to do with Empower Ponle.
No, not at all.
So I, what I suggested to her was that she talked to Jim Sullivan at the BRCRC and talked to him about any concerns and then also to come to a Planning Commission meeting and to let us know more about it. Because, actually, she knows more than I do about that issue.
Yeah, listen, I thought it was well-written. I thought you had some good points. Maybe there, I did print off, Michael, at your recommendation, the, and actually read it, the Guidance for Municipal Enhanced Energy Planning Standards, which is the link that you gave us. It was kind of general, but it did talk about, it didn't talk about potential conflicts between a regional commission and a planning commission or a municipality and a regional plan. But it did, I thought her points were well-taken because there is mapping and we've seen that mapping, right? So the BRCRC looks at and identifies potential sites. And then we come along with our town plan and say, we don't want it anywhere in there. And there could be a conflict. So if both of you have a good point, you can both receive substantial deference at a 248 hearing. The problem is who wins, you know? Just, and is there, in fact, a conflict there? Or, in her words, is the dog, is the tail wagging the dog? Does the regional court get to call the shots on that? And we're just down here saying, okay, whatever. So, Mr. Botso.
I don't know if I circulated it to any of you, but there is statutory language. It basically says the municipal plan prevails unless it is part of a larger statewide agreement. So think about it. That would mean that if it were something like one of the big power lines that run through town that's needed to charge the grid.
Right.
You know, then the CPG process, you know, would prevail. But they would look at the municipal plan, as I understand it, you know, basically, you know, first then have to make a determination as to whether or not it was critical and could not be removed. If you removed it.
But that's at a state level.
Would the regional system fail?
Okay.
Would be the way you would look at it. So there.
That makes perfect sense.
I think it is a lot clearer. I think a good lawyer could argue this, that, and the next thing.
Sure.
But the whole point is simply is that it is an interconnected system and you couldn't turn it around and have one town, you know, hold back other towns.
Right, right, right.
That's the basic theory of it.
I think she was looking more.
I've reached out to our lawyer. I've also reached out to June Tierney and she said she would get back in case she had any comments on it, too.
Yeah. She was looking, I think, more at the commercial wind endeavors and projects.
Who are you talking about, as you say she? Which one are you?
Rebecca.
But that's, but that's not just their only concern. It does.
It's not.
No, because they want to know the process. Even at the state level, we still have say. The Planning Commission has say in what they're doing. That's their point.
Once we have a town plan.
Right. No, no. Any, you don't have to have just a town plan to have say. When we get letters for the cell towers or the solar fields, we get a letter saying that this is what they're going to do. Does the Planning Commission have any concerns or comments? We at least have a time period.
I think it's great.
That's what they're at. That's what these guys want. They want to know the process. Do you have a hearing type thing? A letter comes down. They need to know the process. Like, as in everybody else in the whole entire town, not just certain people.
Put it on the agenda.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But you keep saying just, oh, because you're referring to the maps. Well, that's not just the maps that they have issue with. It's the whole process. They want to know the whole process. First, I was pissed when Shannon went and did the grant because we didn't know she was doing it. She went and did it. She went to the Select Board. She didn't ever say anything to the Planning Commission. Thus, that's why I got yucky. However, there's still, but there's still a process. Then that's what I'm saying. But everybody in the whole town needs to know. And you can't tell everybody because not everybody's going to get the information. However, they still have a say in it because it is our town. That's their point.
Of course they do.
They want to know the process. Is there a certain, so many days to do? Like, we have a process for the town plan. That's what their letter basically is complaining about. That you just did it. You're fast-moving it. You're not going at, and I know things move gradually. However.
They're fast-moving it?
You still need to do the process and let people know.
Well, let me, let me explain something about.
Let's let her finish, because I want to know a little bit more.
Okay.
Thus, we need to do something at least so that they know that we're going to set aside, that we're going to talk about the process of how a grant type thing works.
Agenda, invite them to the meeting. Glad to discuss it with them.
And I have also invited them to the meeting.
A couple of times.
Yeah. And I just want to say that one of the things that's been confusing is all these posts that are online that have convoluted and confused people about the BRCRC maps and Empower Ponle, which is completely separate. And I think that that's caused a lot of confusion and it's sort of stirred up a horniness in us on Facebook.
Well, and it has with a lot of people. But I also know that when somebody, shall we say, takes a ball and runs with it without everybody knowing about it, you know, I feel Julie's pain. Because I walked in this office and I looked at Julie and I said, what's going on? Because I walked in this office and I looked at Julie and I said, what's going on? Nobody ever brought anything to me. What, you know, I'll be honest with you. I said, what gives Shannon the right to do this without asking, you know, for a vote or something like that?
Well, here's what happened.
And I'm not going to, I don't think this is the, it's not on the agenda for a big discussion or anything like that. But I see where these people are coming from because sometimes I feel the same way and I'm part of the board, so.
Sometimes, not one time.
Sometimes, I said sometimes. I do say all the time.
Okay.
Go ahead, Shannon.
And I, and I hear what you're saying, that it did seem really fast. And I think the reason that it seemed fast is because basically, well, basically, I got an email and it said, hey, this is from one of my neighbors. And it said, hey, look at this program. This seems really related to the planning commission. We had already had our planning commission meeting. And so, we didn't have another meeting for a month. There was a two, there was less than two weeks. And so, I, I emailed Mike and I said, this seems to make a lot of sense for.
Emergency meeting or get ahold of people via Facebook.
We, we could, but here's, here's the thing, too, though. Then I brought it to the select board and they got behind it. And I think, I really didn't think this would be controversial because this is not grant money. This is a community discussion.
That's your opinion, absolutely just like my opinion.
But it, but it isn't any money.
I certainly, you know, I, I get it.
It's not about the money. It's the process.
That's right.
So, so she did, with a time constraint, go to the select board.
You got to get on the planning commission, is what they ought to do.
I went, that's right, that's right. They should volunteer and get on these various commissions and that's what they should do to understand the process better. There was a time constraint. The legislative body was clearly behind it. Shannon could have moved ahead with it as a citizen of Pownell, not a planning commission member.
But it still advertises she's appointed.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, you put down on the application.
Did you do that under the auspices of the commission or as a person in town?
I just did it as a person.
Right, and you happen to incidentally be on the planning commission. You could work at Joe Bar as well.
Which is part of the application. They ask you that. You sit on any commissions or anything, so.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, listen.
But I also.
I understand everybody's concern. We'll be careful about that in the future. We do have procedures that we need to follow. We've seen in the past when people haven't followed them and some serious issues. This one, I think, is very good for Pownell. And I frankly am glad you did it. Could we have done it a little bit different? Sure. But we're well ahead with it. This is a terrific thing. And I hope you all go on, on Saturday. There's some good stuff there.
And I, I do want to also reiterate, because I think this is confusing, is that there is no, although the.
These ones?
The select board supported it because we had already had a community visit from Vermont Council on Rural Development.
Eleven years ago.
Eleven years ago. And so, it, it was something that many on the select board had seen before and been part of. And so, it, it isn't, it's a discussion. And the whole idea is to get more people involved. It's not, there's not any development money. There's no agenda there other than a discussion. And bringing these, and, and all of the things that are within this are actually in the town plan. So, what I did when I put it together is I just, I didn't write anything. I edited and I just took pieces of the town plan and just put it in and really didn't know if we would get it. It was like, well, let's try it. I mean, you know, this makes a lot of sense to.
Well, then really, you were part of a steering committee to get this thing going more than anything.
Right.
You know, and now you have a choice as to how far you want to take it, how much, how further involved you want to be.
I mean, the entire thing is, would have to be volunteer led. So, it has to be people showing up and, and wanting to take part.
And since that select board meeting, there are now 20 volunteers involved or 30 in this thing, so.
Right.
Okay. Invite them to a meeting, have them come in. Most of their concerns are to the select board, but we'll be happy to talk to them about our procedures for the future.
Basically, they're asking, they want to know how, how government works. I mean, it's a worthwhile thing.
They asked how grants could be applied for and what are the deadlines for it? And they're saying the select board didn't respond to them, so they're upset at that. One of them is the actual email that I was talking about with Rebecca, where she did, she was questioning who would get the deference, you know, if it was a conflict of interest with the BRC, you know. She wanted to make sure that a regional group of, pardon me, Michael, of unelected officials couldn't come in and tell a town municipality elected officials what to do. Bill has just, I think, shed light on that, that there are some state, there is wording to that effect that says, unless it's an emergency or for the greater good of the entire state.
It's along that lines.
Yeah, okay.
The one thing I'd like to add is Julie is absolutely right, is the town does have a say, but by going through this process, it is, how is that say weighted?
Substantially less deference is my point.
You get the higher standard if you've gone through this process.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're both right.
We're both right.
I've never seen such an impassioned presentation by Julie.
But Julie, pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. We good? Is that in on the mail?
You got to stand for something, Sid, or you're standing for nothing.
That's right.
I hope she did a great job.
Hang together or hang separately?
Whichever, doesn't matter. You got to stand for something.
All right.
Yeah.
So, let's talk about Empower Pownell.
But I don't have any more mail.
That's next. I'm sorry, do you have more?
No, I said I don't have any more now.
Then let's, let's talk a little bit about this coming Saturday and what Empower Pownell is and.
All right. Well, I think everybody, hopefully, most of you already got a mailing. And, you know, this is a new program from the Vermont Council on Rural Development, so it's really similar to the other community visits that they've done. But there is the energy efficiency piece because they're partnering with Efficiency Vermont. And so, just to make it clear that there's no, you know, big development behind it. It's really about energy efficiency. Because that's, I mean, a lot of people can't afford solar panels or, but, you know, everybody can think about home energy efficiency and there's a lot of programs out there. And I think it's a good way to get outreach, you know, to people in the community. So, so that's one piece of it. But I think the way they're looking at this idea of a climate economy model is thinking about what is it about Vermont that's going to attract people to come here, you know, and including young families and new businesses and businesses that we want and to keep Pownell beautiful and to keep it a country town. Nobody wants to change it. And so, that's why small business development is part of it. Recreation trails, health and wellness, and local agriculture and forestry, because those are all things that are really important to Pownell. And getting around Pownell and connecting to other communities really, I think, is sort of both transportation and making more transportation available to people who don't have cars, whether it's more bus routes or ride sharing. Residential renewable energy is, that's really the only piece I think that could address solar panels is if people want them on their own house, you know. And then local grid resilience has more to do with, okay, we know the power goes out a lot, so when it does, if we're going to have the era of Green Mountain Power, can we back up the grid that we have here, you know? And if Pownell is making more of its own power, is there a way to have some sort of backup? So, I don't know much about that, but I know that Jim Sullivan will be there and others. And I know that they've had, I just got the list from John, and there's going to be somebody from UVM Extension talking about agriculture and.
Energy Efficiency Vermont has two representatives.
Efficiency Vermont's going to be there. The Secretary of Commerce and Community Development is coming and the Vermont Community Foundation.
Really, if you have questions, this is the thing.
That's, that's what this is for.
It just happened, they found it in Pownell.
Yeah.
Afterwards, this is our first town. Afterwards, they're going to Manchester and then on that trip, this is, these folks have been doing this for years. It's an act. And they just dusted off the cover and put a new, now, Pownell with the electricity down at the dam with the racetrack thing. We look like we're in front of the game in the state. So, they picked us to come down here very innocently. And all of a sudden, though, the worst thing we did when we said, let's name this thing, and we said Empower Pownell. So, power again. Now, if we're going to have, Pownell's going to be loaded with wind turbines and.
You think that's what people are thinking?
Wow, I've heard it.
So literal.
Yeah.
Oh, come on, it's on the street.
There's other kinds of power. So, let me, can I just read the list? Ted Brady, Deputy Secretary of Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development is coming. Of course, John Cooper will be here. Ben Doyle, Community Development Specialist. Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Stephanie Lane, Executive Director, Shire's Housing. Jeff Maney, Efficiency Vermont. Paul Markowitz, Markowitz, Efficiency Vermont. Elizabeth Marks, Philanthropic Advisor, Vermont Community Foundation. Bima Nida? Did I, how did I do with that? Power guru, power guru. See, she can't use that word. Haley Perro, Outreach Representative, Office of Senator Bernie Sanders. Dadi Schnurr, Senior Energy Advisor, Green Mountain Power. Gus Seelig, Executive Director, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. Mr. Jim Sullivan himself will be there. Dane Whitman, Kilpatrick Fellow for Building and Grounds from Bennington College. Lee Ling Young, Efficiency Vermont, once again. Good people. And then, of course, John, John, oh, John Coffins. Jonathan Cooper. I'm sorry, Jonathan Cooper is Community and Economic Development Specialist, Bennington Regional Planning Commission. We met John here long ago.
He's the guy that came here.
Yeah. So, pretty good lineup for these forums. Lot of good information.
I do think that the forums, I remember this from the last meeting, it's really more about, especially this first meeting, is about sharing our ideas for Pownell. So, people who live in town are doing more of the talking and then these guests are there for questions. They come back to us later when we sort of narrow down our ideas.
And I think also to create the record. I think they put together the record of proceedings.
Right. They write up a report. I mean, what, that's what we're getting out of it, is we're getting someone who's helping us organize an event, create a, a document of that and to really get our ideas down on paper. It's sort of a community planning process. So, to me, that made sense, you know, the more that I learned about the planning commission and what the town plan was, I thought, hey, this is a good way to get more people thinking about Pownell and, and its future.
Eighty ten to you sit around the table and just talk.
And they might down. Big step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's the whole.
It's so weird. It doesn't sound dysfunctional.
It was one of the better turnouts we've had in Pownell.
It really was.
Tenuous, astonishing number of people.
It was good, it was good.
Yeah, but other people are concerned that you're just going to vote on.
Right.
This is what you're going to do. And that's a concern of a lot of people by breaking in your little groups. Because a lot of people don't understand this.
But they were and they go there.
Well, some of those people were at the initial meeting.
Right, but some of them, all the elderly's and all them hadn't gone there.
Well, they need to come Saturday and figure it out.
A lot of them can't.
Right, that's my point. But they're, they're afraid that they're going to vote on stuff that they have no say in. They think it's just a group of people that, who are there are going to vote that, oh, we can have a wind thing. You got to remember, Pownell's not, you don't change. We haven't changed in a hundred years.
And a lot of these older people don't want change.
Right. You know what I mean? You gotta gradually, but they're, that's what a lot of them are afraid.
I'm, I'm in that boat to some respect myself. I mean, this is my home and I was born and raised here. And to have people come into this town and tell me how I've got to change because they moved here and they want to change it, where I've been here all my life, like a lot of other people, and we don't want it to change, it, it's hard. It's hard for people. And when you get, the older you get, and it's, that's what it is in these, and then these older people get the younger people. And, and like I said, Facebook, the last couple of weeks, has just been bombarded with this.
That's why I'm so glad I'm not on it.
Old people are on Facebook.
So.
They're on Facebook.
Well, this is eighty-five years old and she's on Facebook.
Excuse me for one second to keep this on track. Michael has a comment.
I think, I think you're, I would be concerned, too. I think your concerns are totally valid. I think one way to think about this is that for small communities, so, there's so much change that's happening from outside, okay? So, for instance, if Ford decides that they're only going to sell electric cars, you don't have a choice. You're going to buy from Ford. So, what I think this is about is to help communities adapt to kinds of changes that are coming as a result of changes in how we're going to have to deal with energy. Because if you're not, and, and otherwise, it's very scary to not be prepared for that kind of stuff. So, so you're, you're, the concerns, I think the concerns are totally valid, but the one thing, way to think about is, what do you do with the stuff that's flying at you anyway? And how does a small town like Pownell and Bennington and Sunderland, all those communities, so you're kind of the first to have a process to say, okay, how are we going to, how are we going to really deal with this?
And no one is going to make us change anything. It will be up to us as to what we want to change and what we want to do. And that is very clear. Great information coming in. We don't have to do a thing with it.
No.
We've had one good experience, biomass.
True.
I mean, we have new kids on the block in this.
Yeah, that's right. We've been around.
Been around.
Well, I think it's clear that.
Just where the people are coming from.
Sure, understood.
Yeah, I hear that.
Well, let's get them in.
However, we can get them involved. I mean, I don't like Facebook for those reasons. It takes on a life form all of it.
And they hear things through the grapevine and like that. And so, and then, and they don't, you know, a lot of them can't get out. Some of them that can.
Resistance.
Because they've already got their mindset and like that. So, it's just, all I'm saying.
More than anything, this shows that this town needs a town, an authoritative town website.
That's right.
However, there is somebody coming tomorrow morning. There is a new.
Really?
There is a new lady that is, and I cannot re-remember her name, I'm sorry.
Shot to the knees.
She's coming in tomorrow to speak with each one of us for departments.
Excellent.
To do with the website.
Excellent.
So, we do have somebody new. I honestly don't remember her name. However.
She did put a little underflex, I think, too.
So, but there, there is that.
You know, we talk, you know, we talk about change and how things have changed. Well, you take Pownell, just with the solar panels that have been put up. I mean, we're, we're moving in a change. But what we really, you know, when I, when I look at that, that is a change that, you know, it's one of those things that you can't put the brake on or you, you, I guess, I mean, we may be able, it's growth, it's growth and, okay. But, and, and when we talk about our concerns about small towns and change and changes happening, well, one of the changes that we really want to watch out for is what we do have, that we aren't going to lose the little bit that we have left. Because, you know, we talk about small business. That was one of the issues that's going to be brought up, small business. Well, let, you know, just throw that out, small business. How you, how would you, how would you, how would you address small business? This fellow here was trying to ask some questions about it. I mean, it's everywhere, everywhere.
Tell me what you get now.
Well, what I'm trying to get at is, is how would we bring small business into Pownell?
Oh, how to attract it.
How do we attract it? How do we get it here? I mean, or, or if you do have a small business here, how, just keep it. I mean, never mind bringing some. I mean, the only thing we've ever had happen here in the last twenty-five, thirty years is one more after the other has left. Am I correct or not? I mean, I mean, that's a fact.
Well, Henry, I, I will tell you that over the last several years, we've tried very hard to address all of this in our town plan. And it is a difficult proposition at best. So, but it is uppermost in our minds as to how to do that, given the limitations that we have geographically, whatever, to move a little bit away. I think we're resigned to being that bedroom community that has a bunch of little, small businesses. We'd like a little bit bigger, but we're working as hard as we can. And that's why we have to get back on this town plan discussion.
But anyway, but I think, I think you're absolutely right. And I think that people over, when I said the twenty-five, thirty years, I think everyone that has sat on any of these committees has put that on the top of the list and have not been able to.
Well, okay. You're going to, you're going to see in our discussion here with Michael tonight, we're going to get back to that one second, is going to be the follow-up once this town plan. You know, these things are words in the air if there's no follow-up to them, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
If we don't get an energy coordinator, if we don't get all of these things in place, if we don't change bylaws to make it better for small businesses. That's a critical part of it, and I really need everybody's help in that on the next step. The village designation is a big part of it. But before we move on to the town plan, I want to commend Shannon for the work that you've done on this thing. I think it's really cool. If I got you in trouble, I take full responsibility. Called me with not much time left. I said, go for it. I would do the same thing again, sorry, because this is good for Pownell.
Thanks. And one last thing, just Julie reminded me, we didn't say what time it starts. So, it's at the Legion. Thank you to the Legion for, for offering the space. And thank you to Winchester's for providing sandwiches. And thank you to Friends of Pownell, which is going to donate funds for the lunch. Thank you to Stewart's, that's going to have cookies. And Peter Hopkins is organizing pies, so there's going to be goodies.
Well, I thought Peter was going to bring beer. Somebody should organize rides for the old people who can't get out.
That would be great. If I'm.
Give them a ride down there. Expect you to pick up six or eight old people. All right, we have to move on. Michael's been kind enough to sit and suffer through this once again.
I'm sorry to take too much more time. Bill reminded me of another important thing. So, the lunch starts around eleven-thirty. The forums start at one and go to five fifteen. But Bill reminded me that there is no voting that happens at this first meeting. This is a big, open discussion, then kind of a big brainstorming on these topics. Then the next meeting will be late in July in the evening, probably a weeknight. We're looking around the July twenty-fifth. We're hoping for that date. So, we have to confirm that with the Legion, though. And that will be the date of voting. And that will be the date of voting. So, nothing will be voted on at this point. It's a discussion.
Information, exchange of ideas, broad.
And it's a great way, speaking of small businesses, I just met the couple whose living where Mighty Food Farm used to be today. Because I know they're renting, so they didn't get, not everybody who rented got mailing. We tried to get it to the grand list and get it to everybody in the schools, but some people probably missed it. So, I took a flyer over to them and just learned about what they're doing. And I said, "Great, you know, this is a chance to come to the meeting, tell everybody what you're doing, and, and say, come to my farm and you can buy these things." You know, because they haven't gotten a website up yet or anything like that. So, I think it'll be a great chance for that, too.
Excellent, excellent. Good work. Okay, town plan. Do you, you have any opening remarks about our town plan, or do you want us to?
Nope.
You wanna know where we are with this town plan?
Well, Sid has done a great job taking this stuff. So, I put it all together in one document.
Did you add in what?
I haven't done anything since, since you sent, but then I said, "Somebody else..."
I did not put in, I did not put in your vision.
But, no, it's in here.
Okay.
It's not my vision.
It's not Sid's.
So, my vision isn't very good.
Oh, jeez, here we go.
But no, basically what I did, and you guys can, that whole thing you can do every one, because I just thought that you needed something that basically said, "Here's our, here's the big picture," as opposed to, so you don't have to read eighty pages to figure out what the big picture is. So, I tried to translate what I've been hearing from you into the big picture.
Fair enough.
Whether you put that in there or not is up to you. But it is, it is in the draft. So, basically where I was starting is, I gave you a draft that included in all of the sections. And then Sid has gone through and edited because it definitely needed a better set of eyes than me.
Yeah.
Because I'm a terrible editor, and I'm not good at editing, especially so hybrid. And then, I've also sent you maps.
Right.
And that are described in the text. I sent you a, one of the sections we like to have in a plan is how this complies with various statutes. So, there's a brief statement on each of the state goals, which in a sense is a little bit redundant because we actually put the state goals in the, in the plan, in the document. And then, an implementation table, which is pulled all the actions together in one place. But then the question is, who's going to do them? Which I'm leaving up to you all.
That's our deal, yeah. That's, that's not for you to decide.
Now, the only other thing about maps is, we had talked about making some changes to the maps back in, and we were at a meeting in January, and then, I don't know.
Well, we had, we did make changes to maps.
Okay, I've never seen anything.
I thought we sent you notification that we changed them.
No, because we just approved them.
Oh. Julie's gonna tell you about it tonight.
Okay. Did you mark them up? Because if you want me to change them, I need to have something I can work with.
No, they're lying to you. We did not mark them up.
Yeah, I knew they were, but I didn't want to say it on TV.
They're noted in our minutes.
We did write sticky notes on them at our...
But they're in our minutes, our last two minutes.
Didn't we review them at the library? Yeah. And then we voted on it here. We had a motion, voted on the two changes, two areas, I believe.
So...
Yes, if you read your minutes, then your minutes.
Be clear enough that I could, I could take, I can through GIS make those changes.
I, there are actually changes that you and I have had informal discussions about, so...
Right, but these are like changing the boundary, and that's what I left up to you guys. Yeah, you made those, okay, great. Well, if I get those, then I can fix them.
Simple.
My vote's there. Before you leave, I will give you a copy of our maps that we...
Of the changes.
Changes that we did.
Okay, great.
Because it was in our last two sets of minutes.
Okay, great.
So, the, the, you're making your editorial changes, or your, your oil staff?
I've, I've made, I've changed, I've made my editorial comments on the May 12, 2017 draft.
Right. And basically, you didn't change the content of it. We don't have to vote on that. We just have to decide if that's gonna be the draft. We, I do need to put acknowledgements in there. I thought Julie had sent you some acknowledgements at some point here, because I wanted to add to them. We actually promised the state that we would thank them for the grant they gave us in 2015. So, I want to thank, you know, planning commission members. Julie had written up the basic thing. We'll put that in the intro section before we, or somewhere, just an acknowledgement section. And that'll be the only change. Other than that, I, I've had a chance to read the one that Michael sent us. I haven't had a chance to read the one that Sid, but Sid's, and I forget her name, forgive me.
Megan.
Megan, you know, made it a lot easier to read, combine words. It was too wordy in areas, and she fortunately for us is, has the professional ability to do that stuff.
That's what's new.
So, I didn't see, has everybody read it in one piece? Is it right there? Took a look at it? Any comments?
I've read through most of it, and not all of it, from what Sid just sent. And I have some minor edits, and I don't know if this is appropriate now or not.
And it's, well, tell us what they are. That is exactly what we want to do tonight.
Okay, well, and I have the section and the paragraph and, and like that, if you want to do that here or not, I, you know.
Let's do it. If it's, you know, we're not changing the content of the section here.
No, 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 no.
You're gonna make this easier to read for everybody.
I think so.
Yeah.
Because there was some things I didn't understand, and whether it was English or its intent, but, so...
Well, some of this is only, is only, it's only planners and lawyers can understand it for a good reason, because we need to be able to continue our employment.
That's right.
No, I hear that.
Security.
For instance, in...
And engineers, just something.
Introduction 1.0, paragraph three.
What page are you?
Page.
Two pages.
Uh, page one of 94.
Intro section.
Of 94.
Third paragraph, which starts with economic changes.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
And you read it, Sid, which I don't have.
I just have it online.
Change ideas of 2000s, seeing industries lead the area.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so when we go to economic changes, that, the obstacles by panel residents are similar to the northeast and the rest of the community. Northeast should be capitalized. Otherwise, you're talking about the northeast part of panel.
Well, wait, what I would have you do if, if it's just...
So, these are, these are minor things, but, you know.
Could you send them to Sid and he'll pass them along?
Sure, sure.
If you send it to me in word, I'll incorporate it in here.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
I thought you wanted clarification on the sentence or...
No, 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 it is a run-on sentence, and just, you hear, hear the thing.
I don't remember seeing it.
It may be, it may be...
My, my email address is wrong on that sheet that Julie handed out.
Okay, well, that's, I remember discussing this every time.
1:50 yesterday, we got it. But I think there is a problem. Coming out different Northeast US, so it's kinda like, why is it going Northeast US and then back to Vermont?
Well, this one has two Ts.
Northeast part of panel? If it's not capitalized, the intention was the north.
All I did was give this to my assistant and say, "Put these addresses..."
And you could say, "Whoop, address."
You're very similar to Eastern New York.
Okay, for those of you who didn't get it, it's been sent.
We'll send it again.
It will send it again after, why don't we wait until Rick gets this handful of, you know...
What I have as far as, up through section four.
If he's gonna send another one, then I'm not gonna take yours.
Bonnie, C-U-T-L-E-R, bonnie@yahoo.com. Once I get Rick's comments, and once I get your vision into it, which I didn't do, I will send it out to everybody again.
No. Henry doesn't get it.
Don't worry, send it to me, because I'll just wait and print it when you get the changes done. There's no sense in printing it twice.
Well, I was gonna say, after I make the changes, I'll send it.
Yeah.
There is no sending, there is no sending.
Henry, let me ask Henry.
That's a big operation.
It's a big, big operation.
Can we just check that?
There used to be, but it's not there.
I don't know if that's a good or not, but there's only a small amount of them.
Will you ask Ronnie?
Look at me, I didn't write that.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
The secretary wants a word with it.
Ronnie and Henry, will you get Henry's attention for me, too?
Henry.
Yep.
Because Sid's emailing the edits.
Yeah.
Do you still want it emailed to you, or do you want a hard copy?
Actually, um...
Because I know you don't do a lot of...
I don't, I don't think I, I don't think, I think I'll be all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Ronnie?
Ronnie, should we email it to you, or you wanna look at a hard copy of it?
I probably won't look at either one. I think a lot of hands, nobody...
So, it doesn't matter.
I mean, he's just gonna make these changes, am I correct?
Well, yeah, I think he agrees with us.
Okay. Well, I, I think they'll be fine when I get there, because I'm trying to...
It's not a major one.
You know what I'm saying, I don't see where it's an issue.
Okay.
But that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just wording.
That's right.
I gave him the first copy.
Okay, so, Michael, we've talked about the maps. Julie will get you the changes that have been voted on.
No, wait, no, wait one second. He just gave us new maps. Have you looked at any of the maps?
I did.
These right here, I've never seen them.
He sent them about two weeks ago, and a link to the site for it.
Yeah, they were...
But has everybody else, 'cause...
I don't know, we've had them for two weeks, right?
That doesn't mean we all look at it within two weeks, Toots. You've been on vacation, you've had time.
Looked at them during my vacation. I'm so devoted to...
Could be.
Commission.
While fishing.
While fishing on a boat.
Comments or changes?
A lot of us work, you know.
Yeah, I, hey, listen, I mean, you know, I'm not doing this by myself. We can, we can look at this and get it up.
Well, that's why I'm asking, but you're going too fast.
Well, I...
I had a question, because I wanted to...
Good choice.
No, you're doing these maps, but the other maps that we, the bigger maps, are you gonna, are they gonna be incorporated with these maps? Or are you putting them in a different section? Because I'm assuming all, these maps are gonna go along.
The actual zoning, the overlays.
Right, well, so are the other ones, but...
The other ones...
The ones that you're gonna make changes to, though.
The ones that we voted on, changes.
Right, but I think one of those maps shows the land, land designate, the land use areas. And that's the one I was asked, yes, I had to look at.
The town of Panel villages.
Nope.
Bedrock.
No.
Soil preservation. Soil, um, land cover.
Recognize that last one, it's a cat scan.
What is this? What, I don't even know what that word even says.
Terrestrial.
That means ET to me. I don't know.
Sing?
So, I had to...
It's basically they came to my mind.
He was extraterrestrial.
I don't know, that's what I'm saying. But that's what I'm saying, what, what are them maps? Why do we need...
Land and water.
Land and water.
It's required.
Terrestrial and...
And land and water in big words.
Okay, well, I'm just, so we have the flood zone, all right.
Unique natural features.
We do have to talk about the conservation overlay.
Land use designations.
That's the one you're interested in. Is that the one you guys made?
Correct.
Yes.
Two, just two minor ones.
So, I just need to know where, to keep good notes.
There you go.
Jesus.
Mike, I have a question. Are you gonna let anybody else here refer to you as Toots?
Toots?
You can, if you want to. I would be, at least it's being nice considering what I normally call Nelson, so Toots is not a bad thing.
I purposely put Sid between us now, so I don't get kicked under the table anymore.
Okay.
Should just kick me later.
I was just joking.
Um, along the maps deal, you asked in one of your recent emails, and I was hoping everybody would forget this, this is gonna come out all wrong, about the environmental overlay sections. You said, "Remember that discussion." So, there's some other overlay that I'm not seeing here.
Right.
Environmental protection stuff.
Well, let me, let me derail your thought and answer something Julie said. Why do you need all those maps? And Julie, in the original plan, you had a lot of discussion about many of those things that are in there. And I changed the discussion to update it with new information.
Right.
Basically kept it the same. So, when I, when you, for instance, talked about, in the original plan, talked about soils, I said, "Okay, we need a map of soils, if we're gonna talk about soils." Let's show, so that's why that stuff is in there, mostly because, as I read through it, it would say, "We have lots of farce, we have lots of wetlands, we have lots, we have certain kinds of soil." I said, "Okay, how am I gonna show that so people understand where that is?"
And there's references to these maps in the...
It's not to make up anything new, it's really just to illustrate things that you didn't have maps for before, basically. Now, the conservation overlay is in your zoning ordinance. I don't think it was in the plan.
I don't think so.
But to be honest, I really didn't understand how you want, what you wanted to do with that, because it was a rather, it basically said that if you're in a certain area, you need to do a study. And that's what the bylaws were called.
It was three quarters of panel, if I recall.
Yeah.
It was like everywhere.
So, I, we, when we looked at it, I was like, "Do you, do you do that? Do you make, do you do that? Do people have to do that? And do you really want to continue that? Is that helping you at all? If it is, let's keep it. But if it's not, if it's like either a burden or...
It was the second or third time in my career that I even gave it thought.
But, but the real issue being is that the map it was based on goes back to stuff that's 20 years old. Well, the world's changed, we know, we have more information now, so...
All right, listen, I'm open to suggestions on the environmental, environmental overlay, is that what that was called?
And that may be a bylaw issue, but we all, we'd also had discussion of same slopes and those kinds of things.
Okay, now we're onto something here. We have to move on to the bylaw later, so we have to look at the maps in our bylaw books. So, that would be the time, because that's where that is.
Yeah.
So, that's the time to look at that. Doesn't necessarily have to be in the town plan, does it?
Well, I think, I think what I would suggest, that you might want to have in the town plan, and that's why you need to look through this, is, does this give you the direction of what you want to do with the bylaws? It doesn't have to say, "We're gonna make the bylaws, we're gonna change page 14 of the bylaws to this."
Yeah.
But if you're concerned about, you have a big concern about wetlands. Wetlands come out very clearly in your plan, they come out very clearly in your bylaws, good consistency. If you're concerned about north-facing slopes, I'm just making this up.
Sure.
And you don't, and, and that's not in there.
And there's nothing in the plan about it.
Then we should put something...
Then you can't legislate about it.
Well, it also gives you like, and it also gives you direction to say, "Okay, what are we supposed to do in 2018? Oh, we said we worry about north-facing slopes, so let's get on that, right? That's a priority action we need to do something about." So, that's all I'm getting at, is if you're, this kind of sets your work plan for the next five years.
Yeah, off and running.
Pull it up, and what should we be doing? We should be, you know, we should be, you, one of the discussions is having a recreation plan. And I think there's an action there about having a recreation plan. Okay, that should be on your, your, your list of things to do in whatever year you want to do it in.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. So, it's your, it's not only the guiding...
Your marching orders.
Yeah, your marching...
And it lets the whole town know what we're going to be up to, especially if they approve it.
Do you see air maps versus match?
Sorry.
Do you see air maps versus match?
Um, along those lines, it says in here, we're going to have tonight a discussion in the energy section as well. And I think that was interaction between you and Sid after our last regular meeting.
Well, it's about a, I forget the name, the name of it, but there's basically, if someone, if someone builds something now, they have to meet certain standards, and they have to provide a certificate.
This is your section that you looked at. But go ahead.
I'm trying to help Julie with the question she had, excuse me.
They have to basically provide like a certificate of compliance with certain energy standards.
Yes.
And it's not a, it's not a local regulation that's something that state requires, so it just seemed like you should encourage that, you know? You know, and so people know, know that, you know, it's like, I'm sure this guy knows, but let's say he didn't know, and he came before, he might say, oh, and by the way, don't forget, you need to do that.
Do, do we reference that in our section, energy section?
Yeah, I think we changed it from shall to should, because it was, it was concerned that that was a requirement or wasn't.
Correct.
It was basic, and the town may want to have a copy so that you see how things are going.
Good. By changing to should, we addressed something that Bonnie was concerned about, and she said, why can we, how can we require people to do it if we don't have a building commission? If we don't have a building code, if we don't have the infrastructure around it.
Who's going to monitor it?
Right.
That is the permeating question to our business.
But interestingly enough, it's a state requirement that people self-report, so.
Yeah, isn't that something?
Well, it's, it's kind of like, in fact, I think your, your original plan, I think I changed it because it said something about that the EPA required that buildings be tested for lead. It wasn't they required a building to be tested for lead, it was that they required that people be notified as to whether or not it was possible that there was lead in the building. So it wasn't the EPA was saying, go, go test for lead, but if I'm a buyer, I need to know whether or not.
You need a disclosure.
Exactly, a disclosure. So it's, 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 again, a kind of a requirement that's not a.
So everybody's on their honor.
It was the state.
Is that unusual? I mean, it's the state of Vermont, but I mean, is that.
I mean, if you buy a house from someone and they say, there's nothing wrong with the roof, and you find something wrong with the roof, and you can come back and say, hey.
Right, but, yeah, but there's no inspection on it, so, you know, in New York, there's an inspection and it's a regular thing. You get a CO and then, you know.
Want to change your order of map.
The, um, the requirement is on residential, just that, um, the.
Just let everybody know.
Seller disclosed to the buyer if they have knowledge of the paint and if there's been any testing done. And that's, that has to go with the initial transaction.
So the seller has to disclose, huh?
The seller discloses whether they know, if they've knowledge, or if there's ever been any testing done with the buyer chooses to do with that at that point, is there, they can choose to have a test done, or they can choose to say.
At their expense, they could have a test done, it's not the.
Time of the way it is, and I'm, I'm accepting it however, so.
So this is kind of similar with respect to energy conservation. Kind of a similar.
That's what happened to the one over there.
All right, Julie has a observation about the maps.
The gentleman that bought, where we were supposed to do the dairy bar.
Oh.
That's what happened to him. He didn't know any of that stuff.
You want to change the order as to?
Yes, if it's possible, only to.
Well, give, give us, give us the new order of maps.
Well, I'm just thinking.
We're sending it, then put it in the.
Can I, can I do that?
Or just renumber them, give them to me.
Yeah, there you go. Because I don't think it really matters to us, the order of the maps.
It does to me.
You're thinking of how it flows in the town plan, right?
Yes, because we have to look at this book all the time.
Every day.
And if it makes it easy.
Well, just remember, I might have to move the text around if we say map three.
Exactly, because the, there's reference in the text to the maps by title.
Oh, sorry. I will send them in. They're not mine, or it's just to put all the, the Pownell ones closer. Well, they're all Pownell, but I'll send it to you.
We think they make sense in the order in which.
A couple of Clarksburgs in there.
Couple of maps of a small town in California.
Yeah, that's right, just for, as an example.
No, I'm telling you.
Is that better data for that?
It's like, it's like looking for a lost item in the room that has the light on instead of the dark room.
It's easy to make a map for that and just make it square.
So.
Listen, I have issues.
I was trying to explain to Doug, your email. You mind if I take a second to review that with the crowd here, with the commission? Your email about the logistics of what we need to do now. I mean, unless you want to, you have something to wrap up here.
I was reading off the note thing on the energy or what's on the agenda for good.
Uh, just discussion of the draft, maps.
And review the energy section.
But with regard to what we just talked about. We didn't see any. Yeah, and we just talked about it, that the two of you could talk about.
Well, I just.
That all, just that little comment about should instead of shall?
Well, I guess I would suggest that if, if some people are still looking at it, that you may want to put a timeframe on, like get your comments to Sid.
Yeah, right.
By just.
Yeah. And then go with it. I mean, as soon as.
And then, and then, you know, in other words, if, if Ron comes up with, oh, you need to change this on page 14, and Jim wants to change another way, then you have to talk about it.
Right.
If it's just like, change this, change this, then you don't need to talk about it and you can just incorporate it.
We're changing content, we have to vote on it if we don't.
Right, because that.
That, that would make sense.
Right.
It's, it makes sense because it's correct, too.
So, but you may want to.
So when we get that, we have to come together and just say, okay, that's it. Now we can go to the public with it. Now we can send it out to the neighboring towns and everything else, okay? So this is what Michael sent to us today, I sent to Julie and I today. I don't know if the rest of you got it, but at least 30 days prior to a public hearing, the following action must take place. You have to deliver with proof of receipt or send by certified mail, return receipt requested. Copies of the proposed plan to the following, and document and records that this was done. Which I think we just got somebody's, didn't we? And Catherine just sent us one that we had to sign off on somewhere, one of the town.
Yeah, they sent certified copy.
Um.
I'm sending, I sent all this to you because I should tell you, one of my first experiences was in DRCRC was, I was working in the town of Arlington. And I said to the town, planning commission, your plan has expired, you have to re-adopt it. And they said, okay, we re-adopted, never had ever done. They didn't do anything. I had no idea. I guess that's all you do. Well, they didn't do any of this stuff, which we then had to redo. You can't just go, hey, it's a re-adopt. You have to have a hearing.
Proclamation.
Exactly. But anyway, so I wanted to make it clear that this takes time.
So all the 30 days before any public hearing, all the chair people of a buddy municipal planning commissions need to get these. If no PC, then a municipal clerk, executive director, the regional planning commission. The Department of Housing and Community Development needs a copy, the community organized organizations or interest groups that have requested the notice in writing. 15 days prior to the public hearing, the following actions must take place. Publish a copy of date, place, and purpose of hearing along with summary of text in newspaper of general publication and municipality affected. Publish copy of, so that's the entire document.
Summary of text.
A summary of the text.
No.
So our intro, kind of.
Remember, we have to be careful when we do that, because remember the last time.
$10,000 later or something?
Yes, so we didn't need to do it all.
Banner hit us kind of hard and fast, and, but we will be careful. So it doesn't say the entire thing, Julie, so we'll get to the bottom of that.
I don't know.
A summary of text must include the following, a statement of purpose. So this breaks it down, the geographic areas affected.
So is our state statute checklist.
Table of contents or a list of section headings.
Your Bible book tells you that.
Yeah, a description of a place within the municipality where they can come and look at the entire thing. So it'll, it'll be out there on your desk, right?
No, we'll be posted on the wall.
We have the chairman leading the meeting and we have the Greek chorus.
And be, post, yes, I know, hang on, hang on.
It's in his Bible.
I'm sorry, I might just interrupt you, but I would suggest maybe you put a copy in the library, because people may.
Sure, good idea.
Weekends or evenings.
Good idea. Or at Winchester's. Be, post a copy of the date, place, and purpose of the hearing along with a summary of the text in one or more public places within the municipality. Hold your commission hearing, prepare revisions if any to the plan. Then you got to send it up to the select board. Legislative body must hold the first of one or two, one of, or more public hearings, not less than 30. Excuse me? Nor more than 120, oh, there are no more than 120 days after receipt of proposed plan. So you have 30 days, no more than 30 days to 120 days to get your public hearings in place. Municipalities with a population of more than 2,500 must hold at least two hearings. I think we qualify, don't we?
We do.
We're more than 2,500, so we each have to have two hearings. They can be one night after another. They can be on a Monday night and a Tuesday night or whatever, it doesn't matter. 15 days prior to the public hearing, the following actions must be taken for the select board, adopt the select board's resolution, approving plan or amendment, so. So there's time. The reason that I'm giving you these dates is that Sid gets us this thing, we need a, a quick meeting to say, okay, we've all reviewed it, good. Let's go, we've got enough here to go to the public with it. Then we start this process of sending it by registered mail to the other commissions in the area. Then we hold our public hearings, then the select board holds its public hearings. So literally, I hope I didn't miss, Lee, Doug. We're two months away from this thing being wrapped. I mean, we're end of August, maybe beginning of September, before this thing is done.
30 to 100.
If we really move on.
A month to three months, so you're, you're fine.
So do we, do we, yeah, that's fine. I mean, do we need a meeting in between when Sid's done with this to say, okay?
I think, I think, I think the planning commission as a commission has to vote on, on a final text.
That's the one, right?
Yeah.
Because we have to add the acknowledgements to it. And I think that has to be part of it, even though it's a, doesn't impact bylaw or anything like that, it's just thanking people. Okay, so if you get that to us, then we should probably have a meeting before our next regular meeting just to do that.
However, our work session is July 4th and I'm not coming, so I can tell you.
Where are you gonna be?
We can change, not in your work, and I can tell you that. However.
Let's pick another day.
There's some fireworks going on here.
Yeah, there'll be fireworks. Pick another day. Now, does that mean Monday, the 3rd, you're, which is not a holiday, are you, if we're just coming in to say.
Monday, Monday, the 3rd, Sid and Monday are in Boston.
People will be away for a week.
Yeah, yeah.
They're away for the whole week.
I'm not.
Yeah, but you were away for two weeks just a couple of days ago.
I'm, I'm here, you guys need to be here.
I think.
What's that, Ronnie?
I think I'll be at a Trump rally on the 3rd.
Are you? Catch your hat, ready to go?
I know, I gotta get going.
Well, we need to, and this assumes that the basic work is done, you're gonna continue to go through it and make a couple of changes. As is everybody else. Get any editorial changes to Sid. Sid's gonna get us the plan. Everybody's gonna review it, we're gonna come together and say yea or nay on the plan. And then we're gonna start this process of sending that.
It can only be, it can only be July 5th or 6th.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it has to be after.
That's fine. What's our, what's our regular meeting? What's the 3rd Tuesday date in July?
The 3rd Tuesday would be the 18th is our regular meeting.